This annual meeting of Oakham Town Council on Wednesday 18th of May 2022. The first item on the agenda is the election of the chairman for the next municipal year. I would like to open up to the room for nominations. councillor Watworth?
Hi. I've been a member of Oakham Town Council for about five years and I feel it's time to put myself forward for the chair. I've lived and worked in Oakham all my life and have run my own business in the town for the last 14 years. Over my time with the council, I have helped to improve floral displays and Christmas decorations throughout town. I've helped to bring back to life and make it a lovely place to visit. One of my first plans that I would do is to hold surgeries at East Woodsmun so that local people can have their say on how to improve Oakham Town Council, which recently has had a lot of bad press in one way or another. Thank you.
Do I have a second for that nomination? Thank you. Are there any other nominations on the table? All those in favour of councillor Watworth being the chairman? Against? That has passed the vote. Congratulations councillor Watworth. Would you like to come and take your seat?
Yeah.
So we've got the first order of the day.
Business.
Chair. Take a photo of him both afterwards if you like.
Is this bit down behind or on the front? Behind.
Just get the paperwork to...
Are these yours?
No, I think minutes that you will be signing for the last meeting.
Well, I haven't seen you sign your life away there. You may down there. Another area that's a minute to last. Done the decorations at the office.
No, it's not. Okay, thank you very much everybody. Declaration of acceptance. Oh, I've done that. Yeah. Apologies and reasons for absence.
So just got the one apology from councillor Graham who is at the Victorian Hall. He's the chairing portion of the council.
Nothing from?
No, no other apologies.
Okay. Declaration of members' interest.
Okay, should we take a vote to accept those?
Sorry, sorry. Just call votes here.
So would you like to accept those apologies? Yeah, I propose to accept councillor Graham's apology.
And for all that, is that all those? Brilliant, excellent.
Number two.
Number two, declarations of members' interests and applications for disqualification. Anybody want any? Okay, so number four, election of the vice-chairman.
In the briefing notes, I've mentioned this one is open to all councils as vice-chairman, but after looking at the standing orders, this is the same situation as the chair. So it's the same two years on the council, but in the last five years, criteria to become the vice-chairman.
Okay.
Okay, this one.
So in that case.
I'll give the latest.
Anybody like personal stuff for somebody for the last chairman? Two years. What can we do?
Any suggestions? We don't have. Sorry, I know it's not appropriate, but I do believe you have a standing order that says the chairman can revoke any of these standing orders that are not actually part of the local government acting, meaning your own standing orders.
I'll put myself forward. Nobody else wants to do it? I thought Paul was going to do it.
Did you?
That's what I'd heard.
You know, I'm not rules and regulations, but I'd rather tear them up. If that passes, I'd like to propose.
Okay, we've got a second for David.
If we... Chair, I believe we're still standing for the chair. I believe there was a standing order where we could actually move at any point during the meeting to abolish or suspend a standing order, I believe. I'm going to read through it now, but if we're going to have a fire there, then I'll nominate myself as well. Now it starts councillor Romney.
I thought you were sent here. I thought you couldn't hold a post.
No, this we've got that. Can't be on a committee, can't be on a working group.
Can't have any appointment from Oakham Town Council.
On council, I believe that this isn't that.
They're with me there, I'm going to have to look into this. Can we return to this item? Would that be acceptable under standing orders so we can continue with the meeting? And then this is the vice. You can defer it to the next chairman, I believe, for the next meeting. Would that be acceptable too? So I can get some advice as to what the correct way of doing this is?
I propose to defer to the next meeting. Those in favour?
Point of order is wrong, chair. Sorry, you have also got, you've got one proposal that's been seconded for councillor Romney. So that has to be voted on. And then if that doesn't go through, I'll happily withdraw mine because that's what's been seconded and then I'll just support it.
Were you, sorry Paul, were you seconding my proposal?
No.
Okay, so. Those in favour of David becoming the vice-chairman? Two, Dave's.
What to wait to start a meeting?
So nine hours. I propose to defer that to the next meeting. Thank you.
Those in favour?
Those in favour. Okay, thank you.
Would you like to know how we're voting?
Yeah, you go against?
No, not, you just took the move, took the vote for deferring.
Right.
I might be up there now.
I brought us in your hands.
Would you like to say against? You just said for.
And then against.
And against.
Hello, my recording please.
So number five now.
Okay, to receive recommendations from the co-opting committee to vote on the appointment of new co-opted members, assuming that is your council.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk, chair. Obviously it got quite a complicated situation. So at the last meeting we had two vacancies that council voted to co-opt on to. The resolution was that if we only had two applications, the panel would make their decision based on the application forms alone. They wouldn't need the interview process. However, we had three applications, which meant that as one applicant had already passed interview previously, the panel unanimously agreed to recommend that they be co-opted during today's meeting. The other two candidates, although the panel agreed both were extremely suitable and would be put in forward to recommendation, we felt that we couldn't fairly do that until we could able to hold interviews. However, we are now at a situation where a third vacancy arose and we've had the confirmation from the monitoring officer that as of yesterday, council can vote to co-opt fill that vacancy. So this is opened up to a discussion for council and the chair to manage. So the recommendation is that the first candidate be co-opted on to today's meeting as has been resolved that we would co-opt. We do have a second candidate also available here at today's meeting who could be co-opted on. And then we have the discussion about, do we co-opt that person on? Do we advertise the third vacancy? Do we interview the positions? This is why we're opening up the discussion.
Any comments here to begin with? Any comments Paul?
Anybody got any comments or anything? Well, if you've already gone through that process and you're happy with that whoever decided it, then if people are here, surely, you know, that's what it's going to be, isn't it? We accept what was decided. Okay, I propose that we accept. Sorry, I don't have a chance to say this.
So we have Jamie Tyler, Paul Ainsley and Leah as well, Leah Tosland, who are the three candidates.
I'd like to propose that we take. Got his name already. Jamie, Leah and Paul Ainsley as they've co-opted councillors.
Thank you Rita.
All those four. Right, do you want to join this space, chairman?
Standing order two again.
So basically find a space anywhere you can. There's two seats.
I'm not personally speaking.
Unless you suspend standing orders at the beginning. And that's a statutory, that's a red.
Right, so, sorry, point of order for the standing order two, he states, sorry, the election of chairman who will also be town mayor and the vice-chairman of council who will also be deputy town mayor shall be the first business completed at the end of the winter of the council. Councillors should be served two or more years, given to serve at Oakham Town Council in the last five years. So Dave's correctly pointed out, so legally this has to be first and second business of the council. So we now will have to, I believe we will have to have the deputy town mayor deciding tonight. You agree? So apologies everybody.
So we're going back to the election of the vice-chairman.
Yes, indeed. We'll get the chair sorted. So at present time we haven't co-opted the council because we're having to go back to the fourth item on the agenda. So, okay. So at the present time we had a proposal that councillor Romney be elected as the deputy chair, which failed. Do we have any other proposals for a?
Chairman, I would in fact propose councillor Paul Bookston to accept the post and see how he settles in with it for as long a period as he chooses to remain in that post.
Do we have a second for that?
Well, okay, thanks. Okay, to that, I will propose myself for the duration. I do have other commitments to the scope of Oakham and Loo, so.
Well, it doesn't count, you can go back to it.
Okay, I'll give it a try for one.
Well, you probably didn't yet.
And do you have any votes to accept that proposal? It's been proposed.
Yes. And I seconded it, so who? All in favour? All in favour, yes. Oh, no, not council.
Lovely. Brilliant, so that's. Brilliant. So, so again apologies now as we've had to go back. If we can do point number five again, if that's all right. And just re-go over the proposal if that's okay, which was to formally accept councillor Nielsen's recommendation that the three candidates for three vacancies, councillors, sorry, Leah Tosland, Jamie Tyler and Paul Ainsley be accepted and co-opted on to the council.
So I propose that. Seconded by.
What Rita did.
Yes.
All those in favour?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Brilliant. Okay, so we're now on to number six, deputations from the public.
Any deputations by the public? Martin?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr Book.
You can call me what you like, you normally do. It's on deputations actually, because I'm hoping with a new year and new councillors, very interesting meetings so far, that you might take a leaf out of the book of your nearby parish council, which is Uppingham and Eston, who have a moment where residents can actually come and speak to their council, not just on items that are on the agenda, like I'm speaking about deputations. Because one of the difficulties I've had as a person who follows the council is for some odd reason, recently you've just stopped publishing everything, from accounts to supporting documents. So how can we then come to this meeting and give a deputation on something that we don't know? For instance, like this evening, your agenda is also in the wrong order. You've co-opted members. I can't, there's no point giving a deputation about that process because you've already done it. Business is supposed to come after deputations. So I'm not going to go on, but please sort it out and consider having a point where people can come and talk about the issues of Oakham deputations, if you want to keep it at that. I hope I've made sense, but that's.
Yes, I know what you're saying, thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. So number seven, meetings from the last meeting to confirm the upcoming meeting from meeting held on 13th of May.
I assume previously said meeting to everybody.
Okay, so our proposals are accepted. So all those in favour? Okay, to receive any update on any matters arising, not included as around the agenda.
And this month. Was that deliberate? You're working there. Thank you.
Got the band?
They still need to sign co-opting forms if they can't have a vote.
Thank you very much, thank you Zoe. I will do those now, thank you.
Problem with the AGM is there's a lot of process and paperwork.
There have been.
Okay, number nine, appointment to standing committee. Councillors are asked to agree membership for the following committee. Do you have any numbers to be?
No, these, I know the Recreation Planning Committee was previously.
Like Jim, five on staffing and five on finance.
And it was open to everybody, I believe, the Recreation.
So your Recreation and Planning Committee is everybody that's in this room.
The one to attend.
Okay. Anybody interested in standing for the staffing committee? I believe I have to be on that.
Okay, well, I'm chair, maybe I'll just go on for that one.
I'll stay on as well.
So that's three, anybody else?
Just because you know you can still vote.
On the staffing committee?
I'll go on it. Okay, finance because numbers aren't much going.
Well, I'd rather do that for finance.
Okay, so we'll put you down for staffing. Well done.
So that's with Nielsen, Romney, Tosen, Tyler and the staffing committee.
So do we need to accept that?
Propose those.
So I propose someone on David, Zoe, Leah, Jamie. Maybe second in it. All those in favour? Rita. Thank you.
I'll be happy for the Recreation Planning Committee to be. And we've got, do we need to propose that as well?
Okay, finance committee, who'd like to be on that? Do I have to be on that?
Yeah. Do you? I don't think you do.
Definitely help.
Would you say yes?
Fancy being on the finance committee?
Well, I'll stay on, I don't mind.
Thank you David. I thought you'd be good at that.
Stay on finance.
Okay, Zoe.
We have two on the finance committee. Three more please.
I don't do that sort of thing.
As long as we have three, we're correct. So with all due respect, sorry, with all due respect, the clerk does the budget. We just manipulate the figures to what, to put our projects on. There's no, there's no mathematics to be done, we have a computer for that.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you Paul.
Come on Mia.
Two more.
You've calculated very quickly.
One more. Oh, come on.
Thank you.
So to confirm, we have councillors Romney, Nielsen, Duxton, Tosen and Nick to be on the finance committee. Propose and seconded.
So those in favour? Is everyone? Okay, look at that, representation of other organisations.
See if we want to have representation, how many?
Okay. Anybody want to be representative for citizens and advice?
I crib these basically from last year. Are these still valeted organisations that we want to have?
Well, we give a grant to the citizens.
Well volunteered Rita. Thank you Rita.
What, do I do that? You just have to attend meetings and then come back and tell us things.
There's no government.
Do I have many? Oh, I think I can fit that into my schedule. Okay, so I propose Rita.
Seconded.
David seconded.
Give the vote.
Those in favour?
What changes are mine?
Just these at Victorian Hall.
Just these at the Victorian Hall, I would just assume.
Do they not, mate, have, do they not want you on, that there's no vacancies until you come off? Until you resign? All for four years? I'm sure, because this is why councillor Deney came off, because she didn't realise she was on. Yeah, because you're trustee, not a rep, aren't you? I'm sure that's how it is.
Yes, yes.
So that's me being myself. Councillor Nick and councillor Graham.
Do you want to do that? Sorry, if councillor Ainsley is still a trustee?
He is, yes. Yes, I think we're allowed three, but he can be.
Is he still at Ossisley?
Yeah, he can still be that representative. I believe. Okay, I can include four.
Well, I can't.
Okay, anybody else interested in helping Oakham?
Well, I'm quite happy to help.
Well, that's all right. So Rita's going to. Seconded. Those in favour? Trustees of the Morians tree.
I assume as David has mentioned, that's a trustee role rather than an appointment. So would that be the same situation, I assume, as to look into, I think, that one. Who is the current trustee?
I am. Can I make a comment on that? The Oakham Memorial Institute have actually said that they wanted me to remain. They're aware of the censure and said that they've asked the town council that I'd be appointed on to the Oakham Memorial Institute to be effective from the end of the censure, which is in October. So basically it means that I would still remain as a trustee. I won't be able to vote on their meetings that they're going to invite me as a guest. And I will not be reported back to Oakham Town Council. And that will mean being completely open and transparent.
Yeah.
Then I have to appoint somebody else to be town council. I'm going to do that, we'll just wait.
Okay, does anybody else want to represent Oakham Town Council, the Memorial Institute?
Oh, Memorial Council, Rita Nielsen.
Seconded. All those in favour? Yeah. Okay, that's. Brunnen access. Do we have anybody on Brunnen access?
No, I've not heard of that.
I don't think.
I don't think that's.
Shall be not.
Shall I find out what's going on at that and report back and reappoint?
Parish council forum.
You should go on that one, chair.
Okay.
Vote.
I'll second that. All those in favour? Yeah. Okay, military commemoration.
It's, Mr Councillor Body was representative on that, wasn't he? I think he was. Also, I would suggest in his absence, I propose that he retain, remains on it.
All seconded that, four are in favour of doing that?
Unless there's anybody else.
Unless there's anyone else to do it.
Against?
You should nominate people that are not here.
Keep your opinion, it's a big difference, you shouldn't be careful on. What's that, four O come?
Right, anybody like to follow? The person starts with four O. Well done Leah. Don't waver like this.
And do you have a second at four, for at least hands?
And those in favour? Yeah. Is it just one representative or one?
I think so, yes.
Okay, the neighbourhood plan review panel. Who's on that now?
There's not. Sharon, can I suggest that?
Sharon, can I suggest that that is one that we could definitely defer? Because the decision hasn't been made whether it's being adopted. Most weeks, isn't it? So it might be proven to defer that.
Right.
Oh, that's a suggestion. It's a proposal, it's...
Do you have a second or two to defer this until the adoption or otherwise, as we may say? And in favour?
And those in favour?
Will we?
All. Okay, number eleven is calendar meeting.
Madam Chair, do you think we should do away with the 25th of May? Because it's going to be a bit, it's only a week, isn't it? To the next meeting.
The next parks.
He seems a bit foolish having another meeting.
No, there's not, there's not a great deal. No, no planning out of yet, so...
So should we...
Because we're later related, and we have to take that one out.
Take that one out, so...
And the law would propose that this is...
The rest of the calendar, you ought to cloud this, yeah? And I'll second it. All those in favour?
Please, no, I'm abstaining, I haven't read it.
Number twelve, here we go. Right, need some appointments for the working group. Now, you have got policies and procedures on here, but that doesn't actually exist anymore.
No, it was never actually formally abolished. It was coming back.
But it's six months, it's been took yet, as far as I'm aware.
But it was, no, it didn't come back to be abolished. It was supposed to come back in February and it didn't.
Okay, so do you want to keep this going and then with you two? Bringing it back to abolish it, what was?
I thought, I seem to be able to remember reading somewhere on a minute somewhere, that the office would look after the policies and procedures and bring those. Although I misread that somewhere. So personally, I'd be saying that there seems to be a lack of people going on to organize, on to different committees and working groups at the moment. Maybe this one should be parked until we notice it. So I'd be saying that it's, that it is abolished or removed. I think we manipulated our standing orders enough.
Well, if you're going to do that then, Madam Chairman, at the next meeting, you need to bring back every policy we have, because they're all now six months out of date. Everyone. Because they're going to be reviewed. Twenty-two at the next meeting, I expect. Well, they abolished it, they abolished it, they didn't face that.
Okay, so we'll bring the policies and procedures back to the next meeting.
Propose that, and they should have been...
Does anybody like to second that for me?
Yeah, one of them proposed it, didn't I?
Did you all second it there? Those in favour of bringing it back to the next meeting?
Oh, we're doing, I think, bringing that.
And against.
What are we bringing back? We're bringing all of the policies.
All the old old policies throughout to date, as well.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No, 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 no.
Right, councillor Romney made a comment that everything, that it was six months out of date. They may not be reviewed annually. So if they're six months out of date, have we got six months to go, in which case...
No, 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 no. They're a year, or a year of six months out of date. They should have, they should have been reviewed last year, they've not been done. They're now, they're now six months overdue again.
I'm proposing that we bring it back at the next meeting.
We do have a number of policies that have been updated and are updated.
Need to be investigated by the office.
Bring it back at the next meeting.
So I propose bringing that at the next meeting. Anybody like to second it?
Yeah.
Okay, and those in favour? Against? Two. Staying two. So that is going to be reviewed at the next meeting, yeah? Okay. The next work, working group is the events.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes, I would like to move understanding orders, this is abolished as well. And I'm going to give you 50,000 reasons why. This working group consists of two people, basically. Last year, has the biggest spend, but has no authority. And I think this should go back to R and P, so that more members have more involvement in what is going on. Then that members may have more interest in actually coming down and helping on the day. And with a budget of nearly 50,000, I think it needs to be in with the main committee, not on its own.
Totally agree, councillor Romney on that one.
So you're proposing that we...
Proceed this into the R and P committee meeting.
I'll second that. Unless there's any other debates that...
Twenty-nine. Twenty-nine, I assume, so we'll call that then.
Yes.
But in the meantime, obviously we've got the Jubilee.
That's all the everyone running, yeah. That's all, that's everything planned, it's all laid out.
But if we haven't got an events team, how can we do it?
I think there's a difference between events committee and volunteers from the council to go and support it. And at the moment, and I've been asked the question, but I'm not going to give it a death of it. I'm meant to be supporting the Bead Light on the second, and then there's a selection of willing volunteers. I'm meant to be supporting the council's events on Sunday the fifth. And that's purely volunteers, that's nothing to do with the committee. That's just, anybody can turn up to be a volunteer on the day.
Okay.
So do we have this proposed and seconded to continue this into the R and P meeting?
On 29th of June.
Indeed, let's, yeah, indeed, this next one. In favour of this, from our...
Is that ongoing as well?
Will be ongoing, yes. And those in favour?
Okay, floral. Mr Duxton, councillor Duxton.
Can't have committee or what?
Committee or what?
You can't have a committee or what?
Who else would like to be?
I think I can put myself forward for that one. I believe. This is slightly different. Flowers that we put round the town in... On the light posts and things like that. Right, eat at dinner as well, then. So that's three of us. Those with the floral group, that, Paul, Duxton, myself, and Rita. Do I have seconded? All those in favour? David?
Against.
Against.
Not on the phone.
Okay, business liaison. Good, I'm going to, please, because I'm not quite sure.
Anybody else to...
Nick, and Jamie, did you? Anybody else like to join the business liaison team?
I'll propose those two. I guess if they're not the way to job, they're not proposed those two.
Okay, I'll second them. Those in favour?
All do.
So?
You guys, I'm good. Right, media. Who would like to be on the media team?
It's not me. Don't panic. Last year, he was the chairman, which was councillor Nielsen. I believe that it should move over to the chairman again, because often the chairman represents the voice of the council.
You've gone one forward, you've gone to communications officer, which would be here.
Well, I thought, sorry, that's mine, it felt swell, because I thought...
I thought, all right, let me ask you, what's media?
The media working group, they're the ones that were...
Oh, I didn't know we had one.
Coming up with our policy. We have a media policy. I mean, if you remember, they, we then set up a working group to look at ways that we can use social media.
So social media is...
I'm going to vote in for the county.
Well, you have, because that won't... There haven't been for a long time, but there have been.
Right, can I make a proposal that we dissolve or amalgamate those two positions?
Which two?
Media and comms.
Right. Okay, we do that?
Do you have second?
I'll second that.
Those in favour?
What are we doing, solving or amalgamating?
Amalgamating.
So you're amalgamating the communications officer role with the media working group?
Yes.
So the media working group, all become a communications officer?
Communication and media group, I would assume.
Yes, excuse me, that's councillor Nick, is that what you suggested?
Essentially, well, the crux of it is we need to dispose of essentially that. So if we can either dissolve that and give all responsibilities that fell to that particular working group to...
Let's start with the simple thing, what if we dissolve, propose that we dissolve the media group? And then we'll go to the communications group, where we can expand it, so propose this...
What's the communications officer then?
That's when councillor Nielsen was doing stuff on Facebook and writing those to the paper. And that's what we...
That's the communications officer role that we have a policy for that was voted in.
Is that proposing, councillor?
Sorry, it's just a bit confusing, so yes, I think it's...
So so proposing is to get rid of the media, the media working group?
Yeah.
And has that been seconded?
Which proposal?
I propose it.
Seconded, you had the books along, didn't you?
Yeah, those in favour, get rid of the media group? Against? Staying. Okay, so now a bunch of communications officers.
Still not good. Right, yeah, so I think it should go to the chairman. I think there should be more people involved in that to make sure it's correctly managed. And the point would be that if somebody is on holiday or not available, then it ensures that the pages get updated. And also by having probably at least three people on that, and that should certainly include an officer, I think it did before, anyway. I think deputy clerk, the clerk.
The clerk and the deputy clerk have access to those.
And the chat, and certainly the chairman. So if anybody feels that another councillor should be on there, and certainly the three in total.
Anybody else want to be in the communications officer?
No, no, councillor, I have to be very clear, I haven't done a good enough job, so I'm happy to cut on back.
As long as, of course, Madam Chairman, we're going to stick within the rules of the policy.
Oh, we will, we'll have to check the policies out, that's part of our job.
Which isn't anything from the county council.
So just, I've, it's been proposed that myself becomes the communication officer with the help of the office, the clerk and the deputy clerk. Would you like to second that for me?
The clerk has to be...
And those in favour?
You can't be proposed without the clerk.
Excuse me, can you explain that better?
Well, the clerk has to be, because everything that the communications officer post has to go through the clerk anyway.
We're still going for that.
Okay, yeah, so those in favour?
And against?
Against? One abstaining. Four. Is that coming on? Okay, the appointment of working groups, the shelter. Now, obviously, Adam was...
Propose that we, we bring that to them.
Centenary field.
We need to see if that's, just proposed on the seat, councillor that.
Councillor?
Yeah, two, three.
Shutter?
Yes. Proposed by councillor, those up in seconded, probably.
All those in favour of getting rid of the shelter? Yes.
I can get rid of the ears.
Right, back to the centenary field.
Working group, who's going to just be first?
I think that can go as well.
I think that...
I'm a bit baffled really, because I don't know that cuts close, Willa Crescent and Centenary Field were working groups. I thought it was just nominated council would keep it on.
Yes.
So, and I don't know if that's classed as a working group, because it's not a working group, it's not a committee, and you're not an actual representative, because you're doing something solely for the council. So from that point of view, technically I could still be allowed to be the councillor of all the...
Point of order, chair, that isn't a point of order to open town council, which goes against...
With all due respect, point of order, because I'm supposed to speak in a big room, so please don't do that. So it's up to the council to decide whether they want to keep councillors checking on the areas, but I'll leave that up to you guys.
Yeah, that's down a bit further, this is just the centenary field.
Madam Chair, I think that was when we were, when we were doing path projects. I'm sure it was, aren't we?
Right, shall we get to that one as well, then?
I mean, that's one of the...
Get rid of the centenary fields, anybody like to second me?
Yeah.
All those in favour of getting rid of the centenary field group? Yeah, thank you. Okay, we have the public toilets as a working group, I don't remember that.
Like you go.
I thought you were doing a project on that.
No, I wasn't, I mean, it wasn't another one. I didn't, I didn't...
Okay, so now we want to... The public toilets as well, I've proposed it, I'm a seconded. David seconded, all those in favour? Armed Forces Champion.
Oh, that's Gilbody. Is that the same thing as the military commemorations?
No, that's, that's a committee though, isn't it? Do you do armed forces?
Oh, yeah. I'll leave that. Councillor Gilbody.
It was councillor Gilbody, that was definitely councillor Gilbody.
Anybody want to come forward to do it now?
Defer it to the next meeting, Madam Chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm always in favour of deferring it to the next meeting. Right, these representatives for the four parks are just people from that area that are happy to just go and have a walk around, check it out, make sure there's no issues with anything. And if there is anything, then report it to the office, you're not allowed to actually repair anything yourself. It needs to be reported to the office to be dealt with. Anybody interested in supervising its close? Yeah, it's just a case of walking through, I mean, I'm going to make sure everything's... And who's seconding it for me? Everybody. All those in favour? Yeah, thank you, Jeremy. Okay, the same for Willa Crescent. Anybody in there at Willa Crescent, just walk me through? No, there's a little park down, that little overtime house. You've got so many houses down there. Okay, nobody willing to just walk through?
I'm happy to do that.
You're happy to do that, you're happy. Yeah, you're back. And seconded, councillor Nick, all those in favour? Yeah. And Royce's recreational ground, I believe that's you, David, do you still want to...
I think I'll pick around, walk the dogs there.
So I propose David, seconded. And all those in favour? Yeah. And the centenary field representative. May I put myself forward to just being a pair of arms, basically? Thank you, and all those in favour? Yeah, thank you. Okay, open popper liaison. I'm assuming that was you, David, was it?
Yeah, it was, it was myself and Dave, and it was Andy Burton, and obviously, and we've gone.
Did you want to carry on seeing it through?
Yes, please.
So I do, myself forward.
I think you should go on as well, Chair.
Okay, Zoe, David and myself. Have we got a seconded for that? Rita, thank you, and all those in favour? Thank you.
And we also need to appoint the state park working group, apologies, I missed that one, I sent it out to Jetha.
Okay, so the working group, state park, again, just...
Again, Madam Chair, that was me, I'd like to carry on with that if I can.
Just you or...
No, again, David, councillor Lenges on that one. Councillor Tozen is on it as an RCC representative, I think.
And, sorry, and councillor Ainsley as well.
Okay. So we're just leaving our representatives from open town councils, only David, because obviously we've got the other two as well.
Yeah. Can we bring it back in a little bit and see if anybody else wants to go on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're proposing to defer?
So if you'd like.
No, just to be bringing it back.
Oh, so to see if anybody else wants to come on.
Okay, so at the moment we're proposing David and Zoe as our representatives for the state park, anyone second up for me, please?
I'll also do it.
Oh, councillor Nick also liked. Yeah, what do we need?
I don't know if the knees will take it anymore.
I propose it.
Lucky David, all those in favour? Right. Systems of internal control, councillors are asked to review the internal control protocol for 2022, 2023, yeah, previously attached. So we all had a look at it. So we all had a look at it, and do we have a proposal to accept? Thank you, David, do we have a second up? Councillor Nick. All those in favour? Abstaining or against?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Thank you. Okay, number fourteen, chairman's allowance, under section fifteen five, the local government act nineteen seventy-two, the council are asked to approve the chairman's allowance, three thousand pounds for the year. This amount was agreed at the budget for the financial year. Um, anybody like to propose that for me? David, seconded? Thank you, all those in favour? Thank you. Okay, clerk's report.
Okay, so, okay, that's a huge amount this month, just to let you know. Um, so finances wise, the end of the year, Aegar has all been completed at this end. Um, a bit of mess around with internal audit, but he's coming back on the fourth of June, and I've got the realtor to sign off on Monday, but everything zeros out and perfectly confident that's fine. So I anticipated bringing this back for approval by council and signing off at the next full council meeting. Um, okay, so church street toilets, just to let you know, we had a couple of emergency call outs with blockages there. Um, we've established that there was a blockage, it's not actually on the toilet side of things, but all the way down church street. So we got our guy to clear that out, apparently it had been done for years and had been affecting flats as well on church street. So pretty unpleasant, but that's all resolved now. So there was a couple of payments for emergency call outs for drain rotting man, which will appear on the schedule of payments, but that's all sorted out. Um, the fibrelator for cuts close have been ordered, that's due to be installed A S E P, and we'd love it before Jubilee weekend. But again, I'll let everybody know as soon as that is installed. And also the park's now cyclically cleaned, they have been done for April. Um, a few non-urgent items, mainly with regards to residents complaining about overgrown trees, which were in discussion about whose trees they are. Um, but I'll report back to council as when we get a proposal and whether or not they are our trees and we need to resolve that. And that's everything, probably going back, um, excuse me, um, today. Heard from the chap who's doing CCTV, the CCTV cameras in town. Apparently we've had a grant for an upgrading of the cameras. Uh, he wanted to show these new signs that he's putting, going to put up, and just to get our views on whether we thought they're acceptable to be placed under the, under the cameras. I don't know if I need to put this in a proper proposal to have these as changing the street scene, but just to let you know. Do you know if that's something we need to take to a formal proposal for council?
I would say so.
Okay. I'll, I'll get into proper, proper thing next month, but I just want you to know that's what they're wanting to do. And that's everything from myself.
Okay, chairman's report.
Just ask what we're installing in the defibrillator, do we know whether these are being maintained regularly? By anyone?
Oh, yes.
The company does it, not us. Right, so chairman's report.
For those that aren't aware, um, previously we've used, um, Barbara Crowley for first aid at our events. She is really rather busy this year, so on her, um, advisor, we have purchases in defibrillator. Okay, chairman's report, I don't have any to report. Okay, the seventeen, working groups and outside bodies. Any updates from anybody? Anybody been to any meetings? No? Okay, thank you. Um, so lighting of clothes, councillor Romney, that's your paper, please.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman, yes, this is, um, coming back now, we've had the prices, unfortunately it stalled for over a couple of meetings, because the meetings got postponed. Um, you've all had the paperwork and debris from the Rite Light, the lights that they've designed, um, when you look at the patterns, they've actually, they can actually focus the light to give us a mushroom over the top of the poles, which gives better light, less light pollution. And I was interested that the, the one thing that they said on the, on the CCTV signs is safeguarding women. And that's what this paper was all about, if you remember, all those many moons ago, was how dark it was across the park for, for women and ladies walking across. Well, for that matter, no discrimination. Um, they are a bespoke item purely for us. Um, the cost is three thousand three hundred and one pounds and ninety pence for the lights. Um, and then we would need to get our contractor to install them, and his price was seven hundred and thirty-eight pounds, um, plus the eighteen. So that's, that's where we're at, it's really just deciding whether we want to go ahead with improving the lighting on cuts close, um, or not, basically.
Yeah, just to reiterate what David said, um, the Rite Lights are the people that actually make these. So we've been trying and calling around, we've not been able to get any luck with anybody else willing to provide a quote for the actual hardware for us.
Okay, so.
So if, if my Madam Chairman, I would lose, the, the council agrees to purchase the light fittings, and the council allows the office to confirm the order with Rite Lights, and that the office confirms the order with AG Hacot Electrical Services for the installation of them when they arrive.
I'll second that, those in favour? Thank you, David.
Madam Chair, could, could we do a press release on that as well?
Yeah.
It's a good news story for us.
Thank you, okay, number eighteen, again?
Yeah, sorry about that.
You're trying to confuse me, aren't you? Consider correspondence received.
Just the two lines.
A request from Claire Carrow, is that how you say it?
Yes.
Regarding the magic lantern wall on cuts close. She has done it for the last, well, I think we did it last year, then it was skipped for a couple of years, because Covid had already did it a couple of years previous. It has been getting bigger and better each time she's done it, um, and I'm quite happy for her to go and have me do it. David.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I, you've proposed it, I will second it, I have no problem with it, as long as all the usual insurances etc are adhered to. Obviously, there's a beliterate of people, and we want to be identified against cost.
Thank you, all those in favour? Oh, sorry, yeah.
Are these lanterns released at the end of the wall?
No. No, because they're, they're just watch. The, um, castle have an event where the children can make their own lanterns with wood, uh, is it wood? And paper, and they just carry them around, and they can bring their own, and some of them bring little jam jars with candles in, it's all very nice. Okay, so we, David on that one, yeah. Okay, to discuss next step regarding open popper, Zoe, would you want to take that one?
Can I, um, just suggest, Madam Chair, that we defer that until the working groups have a chance to meet and bring back the proper paperwork recommendations in June.
Okay, I'll second that, those in favour? Oh.
I was just going to, I've spoken to Emma Oldabass, who is the transport manager, and she's going to provide a draft, um, S L A agreement, just if they wanted to run it, so we can see what the prices are and what service they'll provide, but I'll provide that at the next working group and at the next meeting for everybody.
Okay. So referring that to the next meeting.
No, my slot, yes.
So you'd propose. David, seconded, all those in favour? Thank you very much. Okay, number nineteen, financial governance issues, payments for approval.
They should be attached with the packs.
Any questions, Alan? Yes, David, sorry.
Hoagies, I know what it's for. Um, two questions, what budget headings is it coming out of, because it should be coming out of, um, events? And who authorised it? Was it councillor, or was it done under your delegated powers?
It was, I think it was decided to the chairman's allowance, we decided that would.
No, no, I was never approached about fifteen thousand pounds.
Okay, I'll have to see what budget heading has come under and report back then, if that's okay.
Anybody else want a question?
Do, do we know, so we don't know actually, no, we've authorised it, then we just went.
I should be able to find out now.
Okay, all right, okay, yeah, thank you.
And how much was that, sorry?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, thank you.
The other thing, the bunting, when, do we know when the bunting's going up?
That's we.
Thank you.
That's we, yeah. Making it if we can, yeah. While we're on that, sorry, what about flowers, do we know when the flowers are going up?
No, well, no, we don't, we'll find out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if everybody's happy with that, do you have a proposal? David, seconded, Zoe, those in favour? Yeah. And Leah and, and the other one, I'm saying. I won't get them to take such stage, I'm just. Okay. So the light payments, that includes the drainage and park cleaning as a component. Um, do you have a proposal for those? Thank you, Zoe, a second up? Very good, all those in favour, I'm playing on, thank you very much. Nineteen point three, bank reconciliation as of the first of May twenty twenty-two. So, yes.
Still in the black.
Still in the black, by the way.
I just propose that these will be accepted.
So can I propose to accept them, thank you, David, and a second up? Mr Buxton, Martha Lacden, those in favour? Okay. Bank signatures, the first signatures of the open town house and bank account.
So many to. What signatures bank account, we should have three signatures, rich account, current account, the, um, savings account.
So who have you got now?
Um, chairman, councillor Romney and councillor Lowe, I believe, for the current accounts. Other signatures, unless anybody knows otherwise.
So are you still willing to be, David?
If we can, I think it just is easy to leave the wall, isn't it?
It is, yes.
So go through the blower again.
Do you need to turn down, is there?
No, if you're happy, let's have a seat.
Yeah, that's fine. And Adam, are we happy, are we, are we okay to have Adam on there?
It's quite a three, isn't it?
We've been two signatures needed, so that's, if you're happy to do that, just don't ask me to sign anything.
Well, yes, I missed that, yeah. So if everybody's happy with that, um.
I've not signed anything till the last twelve months. It's not, it's not a big problem.
David, second up? Mr Buxton, Martha Boxton, I want to go. Um, all those in favour?
Can I ask a question on this as well, just in relation to banking and signatures? In April, I think, or last month, which probably was April, Melman Building, does that still stand as it was?
Still standing, wait.
Is that still happening?
Still have a way for all the, um, documents to be got, the bank forgot, and then they'll let me know when we can get it set up, but still the same signatures on that account.
Okay, so those in favour, David, Zoe, Adam, as the current signature. And against? Abstaining, one. Okay, and the, what's that savings account? The F N?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And two of those signatures on that?
This is multi-manager, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's fine, so we'll leave that.
Are they the same people?
They are.
So do we need to?
I think the proposal is to leave all the signatures.
Yeah, yeah, all of them, all three, right, okay. Right, nineteen point four, back to the trust, I think, two, yeah, that's what we've just done, sorry, my apologies. Um, twenty, Ukrainian appeal. Yeah?
I've put out a bit of a handout, I got crib from the witch website. Um, at the last, um, event on the park, there was the Ukrainian lady that was speaking to that mentioned the best place to, um, donate the money. Um, would be most suitable, I looked into this, but there was basically a Facebook account. Um, and I'm sure it might have been bona fide, but with charity commissions and so on and so forth, I don't think it would be a suitable um, thing to just pass that money off without any sort of backup or knowing where it's going to. Um, so I learnt on the witch website, and these were the suggested donating recipient recipients. Um, all of these seem really good, um, all obviously regulated and so on and so forth, and so it's really just whether council can suggest one of these that would like the monies to be donated to.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, yes, I mean, I'm happy to propose with the disasters emergency committee, you know, chairs and chairs, they've done a wonderful job.
Okay, second that, Zoe, seconded, those in favour? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, twenty-one, have you called you thought, or did we call you, you think? Up broadband, um, do you see a presentation from North Hall?
Yes, hi, thank you, um, I'm Mary, I'm the campaign manager, um, for up, um.
I'm Julian, uh, and I'm one of the delivery directors, the guy who built the structure.
So we are building our full fiber network, um, through linkages that we started in, in Stamford in September last year. Working our way through, um, we've been through up and turn, um, market deep, we'll shortly start us building. Um, so we'll be coming, working way through Oakham up to Mount Mowbray. Um, so what we do is we actually really like want to be part of communities that we're coming, coming through, we're not just building our network straight through. It's working with yourselves, um, supporting local businesses, charities, events. Um, we're currently already, um, working on things within Oakham, as we're sponsoring, um, local cricket, uh, we've got advertisements in Oakham Times. But we're looking at any of the ways that you can help us to promote brands, um, to residents, we'll be doing linketing as houses become available. We've had some houses released, um, that we will be going, our first one of houses that we will be, um, making available and will be put through at the time. We've already started doing some linketing there, so we will be sort of dropping linketing through to let people, um, people know that we will be available, um, to them. But it's just working with you, um, of ways that we can help, um, the residents to tell about us, and, um, you know, to give them better, better broadband, really.
I think, I think just a couple of words from me as well, I've got an affinity with Oakham, I used to come down here for, uh, ten years. Uh, Barleyville Way, just down the road, they all visit the station, so it's quite a blast from the past. Um, I, um, yeah, young love as it was at the time. Long, long time ago. Uh, but the thing is, for what we're doing as well, we're not, uh, our month's not to dig up roads, we go through V T ducts as much as we can. Um, there is a sort of how we can help you, but there's also a little bit of a request from myself as well. So, you know, we're starting in Oakham at the moment, and, uh, we, we've got a choice of things, where I have to put these exchanges in buildings, very small sort of, they're just I T cabinets in a building tucked away, or indeed in, in land as well, so in terms of, uh, you know, if there's a plot of land or something, we can put one of these things. They're prefabricated, they don't make, a lot of these things make noises, and that's the biggest problem, so we've taken that into account. There's no air conditioning, because they're heavy lumps of concrete, they're quite beautiful, don't worry, they look like bricks and everything. Uh, but we just lift them into place very quickly, they're prefabricated, and they're all kitted out, and, uh, you know, just finding space in a beautiful town is, is difficult. So if anybody knows of any units where we could actually, um, put, put one of these exchanges, or indeed help us if we find a plot of land with yourselves, that'd be greatly appreciated as well. Thank you.
Is it open to everybody? It's not just new builds?
No, 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 no.
It's just very new, essentially?
Yes, no, no, it's not new builds, so we're running through, um. Yes, no, no, it's not new builds, so we're running through, the technology's basically, we follow BT network. And if there are some areas which, you know, we need to dig, we sometimes go and do those. First of all, we go for the main houses that are available, you know, because if there's one that's a half kilometre away or something like that, there's difficulty with that. But there's always a, a business case for these things. And it's one thing that people don't realise as well, you're very, very close, I can't say where, but you're very close to this sort of, the trans-European route for internet that goes between Europe and Manchester, funnily enough. And we've connected into that, so we're not going into BT exchanges or anything like that, we are going straight, it's like a high pressure water main and we're straight into that, so that's why you'll see you're getting, you know, nine hundred meg speeds. I don't know if that means anything to anybody, but it's just a, a damn, it's, it's, it's a lot faster than other people usually experience as well. And it's great, you know, it's, it's a good, it's a good thing to do, we need to level up in all sorts of ways.
I think that's been shown in the last couple of years really.
Just one question, one thing I'm really interested in is possibilities of looking at us as accounts providing, say, free wifi in the High Street. So anybody who walks down the High Street would have wifi, is that something we could work with you towards or what can?
Yeah, if there's, there's normally, yeah, if there's somewhere that can house a router, so like, there's like a council building or village hall, something like that, that's what, you know, we've sort of been looking at previously. And then that offers, then that could be sort of.
We're very happy to have that conversation here, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
But if anybody knows of any, any buildings where we could put some of these things.
Exactly where Jamie comes in, hasn't he?
All right.
Okay.
James is staying eight.
Oh, right, okay. Oh, that's fantastic.
Victoria Hall? On the High Street.
And that's definitely something for Oakham we're interested in at one point, I don't know if you remember something about, in fact Paul Hastings began the.
We're going to be talking about.
Broadband, they're on the.
Nowadays, essentially, you know, as we're done.
I think we all found that out through Covid, two, two boys going through schooling and there was Netflix and everything and it, it was difficult for everybody, for whatever reason.
Especially if you don't do things, so. Any more questions or anything you'd like to put to?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so twenty two events within Oakham.
Your paper, Zoe, is. Yeah. So I brought this paper through, obviously, we have had an events team and a wider council who have worked spectacularly hard over the last couple of years to put on events in Cuts Close Park. And those have got bigger and better every year and the feedback from them has got better every year. And I think it's right that we continue to give those our main focus and that they're one of our really big selling points. They're something that we really give to the town, they're something that is really visible and tangible. And I think it's right that the path we're going down is to continue on, but I'm sure most of you will remember that this December just gone, Oakham late night shopping very nearly didn't happen because the organiser, Carolyn, who is the Oakham Town Centre Events Manager, she was really, really struggling with her road closure. It was literally the Monday, the Monday morning, she still didn't have confirmation that everything could go ahead. Late night shopping is a really good event for the Oakham, it brings so many people in, it's really good for the community, it's really good for businesses, it's something that could be made more of, and I felt it was a real shame that there was nothing that we could do to step in at that point and say we could help with road closures. So that's what got me started and then as this year has gone on, Carolyn, Carolyn has continued wanting to do events and trying to set up events and is struggling with road closures, is struggling with all of the overheads and everything that's involved. And the reason I brought this paper is that I'd like us to have a discussion around, are there ways in which we can work together? So I do, I do not want to take anything away from the events that we do. I do not want to take any of the funding away from the events that we do, any of the publicity, anything like that. If anything, I want to be able, to be able to work with Carolyn to make ours bigger. But really, what the proposal is, is that we, as Oakham Town Council puts forward some or all of the money for the road closures that Carolyn has put forward this year. So those events are down there on the appendix that we've got, so there's one in September, a food festival in October, there's a pet festival and then obviously the late night shopping, which is the one that is my major concern. I want us to be able to create a working relationship with Carolyn so that our events are not going head to head, so that it's not a case of people attend hers or ours. So it's a case of, it can either be that they almost merge from Mill Street into Cuts Close or we work with her to make sure that we have completely separate dates. One of the things that I'm suggesting is that these stalls that the events committee set up for local businesses at the summer concerts last year, they were really, really successful, they were really helpful to lots of local people that are small time traders, part time traders, hobbyists, they were also, again, really popular members of the public and it's something that we're continuing this year. Now, these are the kind of traders that can't afford to buy, to purchase a stall at, say, Carolyn's Food and Drink Festival because the cost of the stall is more than they're making that day. So I am proposing that we work with Carolyn and say, right, as a kind of a quid pro quo, we're helping you with road closures, therefore we want you to allocate, for example, four stalls that Oakham Town Council can use either. I was at late night shopping doing fundraising for Peppers, which was a, a great time. And so it can be Oakham Town Council themselves using it for fundraising, awareness raising. We can allocate those out to people that we work with, we can advertise them through Facebook and say, if you want a stall, contact us, we've got them at these next events and draw an edge out of the hat. A way of getting all of the community to work together, basically. I do have to apologise to you because I didn't include the figures in the paper that I sent through to the office. So I've mentioned that Carolyn works on a profit basis, so all of the stalls pay to have a space. But obviously she has overheads to cover, not just the road closures, there's also the cost of manning the closures, which is two hundred and eighty pounds. There's the cost of providing dustbins, providing five dustbins at an event again is two hundred and eighty pounds. And the figure, the total figure for the road closures is one thousand one hundred and twenty five ninety. So I have written my proposals down, that I would like OTC to pay for the road closures with the understanding that OTC be included in all advertising, all of these events and that four stalls allocated to OTC at all of those events. And I'm also proposing that Carolyn be asked to join the events committee in order to create a working relationship between the two of us and obviously that's different now. But thank you very much, I'd like to open that up for discussion.
Anyone on the stage, David?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, you know what my feelings is about working with people that make a profit, but beside the point, the, I have no problem with working with somebody, but I do have a problem with only four stalls. Because our, our storeholders that come to our events have supported us all last year and no doubt will support us all this year. And I think what I would like to see there is that those that come regularly, most weeks, are offered a stall. So not just only four, there may be six, eight, however many, because that's what we do. We give back to the community and that's how we should do that. So if we're going to spend a thousand pounds, then we want more than four stalls, in my opinion. And I will be hoping that we can do that, if we're going to, if we're going to go on this route, that we will have more free spaces than four. I think it is a good idea to work with her to a degree. But we just, we just need to keep an eye on where we're going with it. So, yeah, it's, doesn't sit well with me, but if it means that our storeholders get an opportunity to do the bigger events, they're not cheap because they are sixty pound a shot. Well, for a small store owner like you that come to, to our events, sixty, they just have, they wouldn't afford sixty pounds, they don't make sixty quid in a, in a, in a day. So I think it is important that if we're going to do it, that we can give them that opportunity to push their, their businesses, to support them, supporting us.
My question would be, Caroline's making all this money. We're paying out, whatever we're paying out, just under two thousand pounds. What happens to the rest of the money?
Well, just over one thousand, not just a little bit.
I've been, I've been looking at this and it's, it's interesting, I totally agree that there should be partnership working because otherwise we may as well not bother turning out. We've been approached three or four times, it's twelve months, by Four Oakham, who is an organisation born in Oakham, set up out of the failing of the town centre development some years ago, where they've been putting on events and asked us to fund their, funding of exactly the same exists, fund their road closures. And the councillors stood up and said, as a whole, we said, no, we won't because A, you're not showing us how much money you've got incoming. And B, there was a question mark about, you know, what, what, there was an open and transparency about that. And on this one here, I mean, I was looking at the figures, I find it odd that it's been quoted that she charges sixty pounds per unit or per stall that goes up because I thought it was less than that. But if it is sixty pounds, when I've been around the food market, which are very well organised, even if she only had thirty units and there's normally more than thirty units, that's one thousand eight hundred pounds. And over the amount of six events, that's ten thousand eight hundred pounds. And the expenditure by all accounts looks like per event is round about, well, less than, ooh, one hundred and eighty seven plus ninety three, less than three hundred pounds. So there is definitely profit being made, there are certain rules in local government that council tax money cannot be used to the benefit of an individual company or, an individual or a company where we are actually supporting them because we're not allowed to show favour against other businesses. Equally, agree with David there, that yes, maybe we should have more exposure if we were going to in some way support this because we don't want to see these sort of things fail. And basing that on, if we were just to hire OTC stalls for the remainder of the amount of events you've got left, it'd only cost us seven hundred and twenty pounds anyway. So the offer of four stalls, in actual fact, sounds brilliant, but it's actually a, a miss, a, a miss, a lot of smoke and mirrors. There is some history associated with the town centre manager who isn't appointed by Oakham Town Council or any organisation, it was a self appointment, which seems, which is very good, I admire the, the entrepreneur that Carolyn Acton is, because I think she's brilliant at what she does. But some years ago, Oakham Town Council were approached by Oakham Town Partnership and asked if we would support them employing a town centre manager. And we gave over ten thousand pounds for a twelve month period on the expectation there'd be a, not so much a return, but there would be ongoing events, that that ten thousand pounds would generate enough money where the town centre manager could actually only become self sufficient where they A, earn a living and B, to afford to put on further events. After one year, that ten thousand pounds was gone and everything went quiet. And then the town centre system is all be started again. So if we were to do it, I would probably support a contribution towards late night shopping. We've done that in the past historically and I'd probably set that as a figure of no more than five hundred pounds.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because there were some quite derogatory statements made there, and I just want to clarify that this paper was written by myself. The number of four was suggested by myself as an opening gambit for us to discuss. And it was perhaps remiss of me to not ask Carolyn Acton to provide vague statements and full information about incomings and outgoing, so what I wanted to do was get the conversation started and get a discussion going so that we could maybe start to move forwards.
I'll come back and just say, in fact, their word of comments or statements are actually a statement of fact. There is one other thing as well, in the event that we move ahead with this, is that any events committee, which doesn't exist anymore, but any committee that wishes to have a non-councilman in it, is for the committee to settle it and not for the council, that's in standing orders.
Okay. Right, I'd just like to say that if we were in, to enter into a commercial agreement with a third party, should have benefits to the local community, this appears to be a financial benefit to one person, the organiser. I would say that I'm quite happy to look into this, but I would be against paying for the road closures. I would be against working with Caroline Acton in the capacity that she's in. Are we going to expect her to pay for her as well as everything else? But that's just my opinion, so Zoe, do you want to carry on with your proposals?
Well, no, proposals have been made, right, it's, if anybody would like to second, if anybody wants to second, there is.
Well, I'd like to make, I'd like to make amendment to the first proposal, that it's not for stalls. Can I ask a question for the deputy clerk? How many stalls do we normally have overall, we had this year, different stalls? Not, not, not.
For this commission?
Not food, but the craft stalls that we had last year.
I have got that information, if you just.
Well, I'm ready to think, we had about four or five.
Yeah, we have.
Obviously, we have more on the longer events that we've had.
Well, I think it's good that we're seen to be involved in local things firstly, but I think the whole people finance, I don't know, around, it's in the, need for consideration, really. But as a local person, we should be seen to be involved, in my opinion, in supporting these events. But how we do it should be beneficial, obviously, and as you say, we shouldn't.
No, because the food stalls make, make a lot of money, don't they? So it was just purely the crafts, craft stalls.
So I've got my fingers to say yes or no to a negotiation with them tonight, is that what you're asking?
No.
How is all this, what's written down there?
No, I made a proposal to start a discussion. So people can suggest amendments to proposals or there would be no secondary, in which case it would form, so we'd be asked to make a separate proposal. But I was just opening up a discussion.
Ten.
Ten, thank you. In that case, I would, I'd like to make an amendment to the, to the first proposal and that we are allocated ten spaces that we can allocate to our store employees.
Do you want to second up for that or?
Well, I've made a proposal, no.
A bit of amendment.
I might amend.
I, I accept the amendment, okay.
So who's in favour? Against? Offstanding? Okay. So will you be bringing back on the paper? Or have you?
We propose to pay for the road closures on proviso, that we are going to be allocated ten, ten stalls.
Okay. Excuse me, can I open up to be abstaining? I misunderstood, there's so much going on.
Three, three, four proposal, then two against proposal and two abstentions, okay. Sorry, that's a good one. Sorry, bear with me, sorry, four abstentions, sorry.
We're all very new, we've got to get ahead.
So three, four, this again, two against.
So three, four is again, two against and then four abstentions, it's fine. Yeah.
Still passes, that's passed. Okay. Right, twenty-three, returning agenda items to review of this item's privacy range.
Well, this is more of a housekeeping thing for myself, unfortunately, I must apologise. Councillor Rodney brought a paper to a R and P meeting on the 26th of January, I've not, I've not passed it around, where it is discussed and to be taken to a full council meeting, which unfortunately it wasn't, it lost, it lost in the post. So I'll forward this on again for discussion if Councillor Rodney is happy to...
Well, with all due respect, we don't need to discuss, we've already debated.
Yes.
We made a decision to get prices for, put the purchase of staging, which didn't come back, prices for, to purchase windsocks, which, I don't know, that's never come back, to get a price for the installation of the posts, but that's already been done, which, it's been done, obviously, outside of councils because that had not been passed by council, we're supposed to get a price for it. And I can't remember, the last one was...
Lack of toilets saw on site and amount of...
Oh, yes, we passed the toilets, which has, which has been actually. So it was just a case that the prices hadn't come back for the things that we voted on, that was all it.
So, yes, so in this, apologies, I think it came into the R and P meeting rather full council meeting.
With all due respect, it's not a question of whether we need it or not. Council passed a vote to get a price for staging, so that price has to come back to council and then we then decide whether we need it or not.
That's right.
That's the way, that's the way it works.
David, I gave you the information.
I know, I know, but I was waiting for the paper to come back with the price, so that's, that's how...
As I said, housekeeping is my, my fault and this, so...
I'm not blaming anybody, Madam Chair, it's just, I just wanted to know where my, where my prices were for the paper I brought to council.
So, no, so first just apologies to council, that's entirely my fault for not bringing it correctly. And I would suggest in future what I will do is I will add a returning agenda items to, as a standing agenda point for everything and developing whiteboards just to tick through six months for policies, procedures and items returned, so that it's all listed again, so apologies.
All right, so twenty-four, swimming conditions. That has now given me the draw.
Can I, can I explain, Madam Chair?
Yeah, please do.
Because you know, this was, was one of my little projects that I wanted us to look at taking on the old RCC swimming pool. Luckily, before we got any further down the line, I was very kindly presented with some information that actually, there's no good asking RCC because they don't actually own it, they only leased it off the college, that's why it's been withdrawn, because some members know that.
So who owns it then?
The college, yes. And they're going to knock it down.
They're going to knock it down, is that what they said?
County Council will pay for it.
Who, sorry, who is paying for it?
County Council are going to pay towards it, to pay it towards knocking it down. My last say?
You can use the public, it's on the website.
Yeah, the county council can't afford to repair it, but they can spend £150,000 towards knocking it down.
So that's on the website, yeah. It's public, it's public. So I just can't handle it, I'm like... I was quite keen on that.
Yeah, I think I never got that a lot of traction.
There you go, right, leave. Okay. Well, the meeting is now eight, nine minutes past eight, we're closing the meeting. Next meeting will be on the 8th of June at 6:30. Thank you, everybody.